I'd like to call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order, please. And may we have a roll call.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Ms. Chester. Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Yutman. Mr. Warrenbrand.
Here.
Mr. Welch.
Here.
And we do have a quorum, so we can continue with our meeting. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, sir.
And if you would take a moment to review the minutes from the last meeting, and then I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay. The minutes are approved. Any written communications?
No, sir.
Or continued public hearings? Okay. At this time of the meeting, we ask that any members of the audience who wish to speak or may wish to speak before this board, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this evening is truthful to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And just a couple of, just a ground rule, that if you do come forward to speak, please come up to the table in the center of the room and sign in your name when you do that. Thank you. And state your name for the record. We have two new public hearings this evening. One is case number ZBA 2014 C-04, a request by Susan and Michelle Kozlowski for a conditional use permit to establish a daycare facility at 211 West High Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. And may we have the staff report, please?
This is a revised request by the Kozloskis for a conditional use permit to allow the daycare facility at 211 High in the R2 Single Family District. The home would be, or actually currently is, a state licensed daycare, but it would be allowed to have up to 10 children during the busiest times, if granted as proposed. If approved, the daycare would not be transferable to any future owners or residents of the property. It would only stay with the current operators. Little bit of background, this is a four-bedroom, single-family home on a 6,600 square-foot lot. The house is proposed to be, continue to be used as a daycare with the single-family home. The Kozloskis do live in the house and use it as their residence, and they are aspiring to purchase it in the future, in the long term. The proposed daycare would allow for up to 10 children in the home at one time. There would be no more than eight allowed during the school day, and then additional children in the morning or after school. The applicants are currently operating a home occupation daycare, which was administratively approved back in May. With the home occupation daycare, they are currently allowed to have up to five client children on the premises at one time. Also should mention, the property owner supports the daycare use. This case came before zoning, or a similar case came before the zoning board in August, and it failed to pass by a two-to-two vote. Since then, they've amended their requests. They're now requesting only 10 children instead of the originally requested 11. And we've clarified that the conditional use permit, if granted, would not be transferable to any other parties. Looking at the future, or the land use map, the property has a hash mark here. It's at the corner of Cedar and High Streets. It's in the Westerbana neighborhood. It's surrounded by single-family and duplex and multifamily uses across the street. It's mostly single-family, but there are different types of institutional uses in the neighborhood, including a church only a couple hundred feet away. Taking a look at our zoning map, the property is zoned R2, single-family. Across the street is zoned R3, single and two-family. The R2 district, let's see, home. Basically, the R2 district allows for single-family homes, but also allows for complementary uses, such as parks, schools, and other institutional uses. Where appropriate, we're allowed with a conditional use. And turning to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, the property is located here in Westerbana, in an area for residential urban pattern development. Okay. So this is a revised proposal, as I mentioned before. The applicant currently rents and live in the home. The applicant's family includes two children who live in the home, but those children are generally not at home during the school day, or at least not every day. During the day, they would like to care for up to 10 children in the home. The applicants are licensed by the State of Illinois, DCFS, to care for eight children during the school day, and an additional three children before and after school. Their original application, they said they planned on averaging six to seven children per day. Basically, the applicants wish to expand their home occupation daycare to accommodate additional family members for their existing clients and possibly new clients. They would be giving English lessons, which is something that other daycares don't often do. Let's see. They currently have the home occupation for up to five children, and staff has not received any complaints regarding that current daycare. The daycare would operate 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday to Friday. If they do have more than eight children on site, they're required by the state to have a third caregiver. The daycare is entirely on the first floor of the home. You can see the site layout here. There's a enclosed porch and a living room, and an eating arts and crafts space, and a sleeping space as well. In terms of square footage, the state requires them to have 385 square feet, but this home, they currently have 742 square feet devoted to the daycare use. In terms of drop-offs and pickups, drop-off times are staggered during the busy drop-off time between 7:45 a.m. and 8:15 a.m. Pickup times are also staggered. The daycare use is currently overseen by several state bodies, including DCFS, the state fire marshal, and also a federal food program. All those bodies conduct onsite inspections. So the reason for this application is because the city's definition for a daycare home is not in alignment with the state definition. The state allows a lot more children than the city's current definition. The state's definition, or actually, I'm sorry, the city's definition for daycare home is any facility in a home for the care of no more than a total of five children, and it's considered a home occupation. And then in our zoning ordinance, we have a separate use for daycare facility. Daycare facilities are considered anything other than a daycare home. So basically, whether it's in a house or not, it's considered a facility if it has more than five children. Let's see. I mentioned they currently have the home occupation, which allows up to five children at one time. So essentially, they're allowed to have five drop-offs and five pickups every day under the current situation. The zoning board of appeals has approved seven conditional use permits for daycare facilities in the past. Three of these were for larger standalone facilities. We're talking facilities that serve well over 100 children. But one of them at least has been for a similar use, and that was on, at 1910 Catherine, and that was actually for an adult-dependent daycare, which was located in a single-family home, which allowed for the care of eight adults. So development regulations. The home meets development regulations for floor area ratio, open space requirements, required setbacks, all these things. The zoning ordinance, parking requirements for daycare, however, are not met onsite, but they can be accommodated on the streets. The zoning ordinance requires three off-street parking spaces for every two employees. So they have, they have four spaces in the back, which accommodate all their employees. The zoning ordinance also requires a drive-in facility for the drop-off of children. And this was really aimed at more the larger daycare facilities that are located in a commercial district. So this wasn't really aimed at home daycares. However, the operators are proposing, and they have been, designating a space on Cedar, directly next to the house, which children can be dropped off. Basically, parents will park the car on Cedar, stick the parking lights on, or the flashers, and bring the children right into the front door. So on this map, you can see there's a white car that's in the area where the parking is, and then the front door is on the northwest corner of the property. So it's a pretty easy drop-off. Let's see. City engineer has reviewed this proposal and has approved it for up to seven drop-offs and seven pickups per day. So staff is recommending that that be a condition of approval, is limiting to seven driven drop-offs and pickups. Now, it should be noted that there will be fewer vehicle trips, and there will be clients. Some clients have multiple children, they drop off together. Some clients are walked in or bicycled in. So with that seven drop-offs and pickups, they can probably have up to the full 10 children, depending on their clientele. The operators have been conducting repairs in order to meet the building code. They've completed installation of childproofing on doors and windows. They're still completing some rear stairs, but those will be complete very soon. Another building code item worth mentioning is the requirement for fire sprinklers for daycare facilities that see more, that oversee more than five children 30 months or younger. So this building requirement is actually kind of why we have the definitions in our zoning ordinance the way we do, because those larger facilities that have tons and tons of small children, they need to be sprinkled against, and protected against fire to a higher amount. But in terms of the state fire marshal and DCFS, as long as there's less than five children under, or five or less children under 30 months, the property does not have to be sprinkled, and we would approve it as it is. So requirements for conditional use permits. First requirement, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at the location. The proposed use is convenient to the public convenience. This has been proven with the existing daycare, which is currently full to capacity. The daycare is within walking distance of several families within Westerbana. It's located close to downtown Urbana and the University of Illinois, which is convenient for parents who want to drop off their children. The property is also close to Lille School, and children can be walked from Lille to the daycare. The applicant has indicated that there has previously been a home occupation or a home daycare within a block of this location that was recently, the operators retired. So there is a gap in service in this neighborhood. Second criteria, the proposed use is designed, located, and operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it's located. Staff feels this criteria is met. Basically, the use could have a similar impact to that of the five-unit apartment building directly across the street to the north. As noted before, staff suggests limiting the amount of vehicle drop-offs to seven and vehicle pickups to seven. Otherwise, the home will appear and act like a single-family home from the outside. Final criteria, the proposed use conforms to applicable regulations and preserves the essential character of the district. The proposed use is consistent with the general purpose of the R2 district. As I mentioned, it's an, R2 districts are intended to provide residential uses in several density ranges, and as appropriate, also to allow other uses compatible with residential areas. I mentioned before, it would be of compatible intensity to the apartments across the street, and would appear to most people like a single-family home. There will be no exterior signage. So consideration for a conditional use permit, zoning board may add conditions to the approval for such things as location, extent, and intensity of the uses, required screening. I forgot to mention, the home does have a privacy fence screened in backyard, so children can play safely out there. Other things, regulating vehicular access and volume of trips, and any other conditions deemed necessary to allow the use. So the staff recommendation tonight, based on the existence of the current home daycare that already has, allows five drop-offs and five pickups. Staff recommends approving the proposed use, subject to the following conditions. One, no more than eight children shall be allowed onsite during school hours, and no more than 10 at any time. Two, no more than five children under the age of 30 months shall be allowed onsite at any time. Three, no more than seven motor vehicle visits shall be allowed for morning, and no more than seven motor vehicle visits shall be allowed in the afternoon. Fourth condition, child drop-off and pickup times must be staggered by at least 10 minutes. Fifth condition, drop-off and pickup shall occur in the designated area, as approved by the city engineer, along Cedar Streets, and shall not occur in the shared driveway. Six, the conditional use permit shall expire if the applicants no longer reside in the home. Seven, the facility shall meet all applicable federal and Illinois Department of Children and Family Services regulations, including those limits on the number of children. And finally, the use must conform to all applicable building codes and obtain a certificate of occupancy from the Building Safety Division. With that, I believe the applicants are here. They can speak and answer questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for staff.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff? Charles?
Okay. Where to start here? Number one, we've changed our mind on the fact that we can now say that the conditional use permit will not go with another owner or operator of this property?
Yes. The zoning administrators cleared that up.
Okay. And number two, I'm really confused here on the amount of children, okay? So let's go to our, I guess, we'll just go to the recommendations with the conditions. Condition number one, you're recommending that no more than eight client children shall be onsite during school hours, and no more than 10. And I'm assuming then that 10 is client children also, even though it's not there?
Yes.
Okay. So we're eliminating their two children from this whole thing?
Yes. From what I understand, their children are most, for the most part, away during school days.
And they're away after school hours also, then?
Yes.
See, the definition of a daycare facility includes their children. So to make this business viable, I guess, they're still thinking that they need eight and 10 paying customers.
Yeah. A clarification on that, that's what the DCFS would allow, and that takes into account their children. They're separate from the eight and 10.
And the city has had a change of heart on that since August also, since the recommendation in August was not that high, as I remember it?
Yes. We were looking mostly at the impact of the number of vehicle trips.
Which has always been seven?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see if I got one more question here, I think. So we had a concern last time about the number of children versus the number of trips. So we're just, and we had said in the past that the only way that you were going to be able to enforce this was if a neighbor, somebody complained, and a staff member would have to go out and check it out, because we don't have the people to do a daily count or anything like that.
That's correct.
We're now set on the fact that the city staff is comfortable still with the same seven trips and eight to 10 children?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
The question I have is along the same lines that, there's going to be some neighbor who's going to have to enforce the 10-minute staggered times? And do we really want that as a condition, having raised children? Nothing works on that kind of clockwork.
Yeah. We realize it's probably not going to work on that clockwork, like you said, but really, the only way it's going to be brought to our attention is if it's a problem. And if it is a problem, then we could send an intern out to watch the times.
But if you, for instance, if you didn't stipulate the time between drop-offs and just waited for someone to call in and say, "I think there's a problem here, there are too many cars," wouldn't that trigger the same response?
It could be. That would accomplish the same thing. We could say just no more than one client vehicle there at a time, and then people would have to circle until they saw that it was free.
Well, that might be, that may raise other issues, because this is near a grade school. But I'm thinking, if we take that, the 10-minute stipulation out of the condition, for instance, and then later, if somebody would call in and say, "I think there's a problem here, there are too many cars too often," that would trigger the same response, right?
Correct.
So it seems to me, rather than putting it in something you can't regulate, maybe it's better just to wait till the problem arises.
Possible.
Can I ask a, or make a comment? The stipulation, as I understand it, is partly in response to concerns about parking and traffic volumes. So it's partly just like to make everyone aware that this is going to be general practice as a way to assuage any extra traffic. And also just as a general point, kind of all of the zoning regulations are, this is how they're brought to our attention, like no one's going out and measuring setbacks or, you know, screening around air conditioners or whatever it might be. Like it's, this is kind of always how it works, is by, until it's a problem, someone complains, so. Just, it does seem overly uptight, but a lot of these do until it's an issue.
Well, I think given the, this particular neighborhood, the fact that it's, you know, the streets are not
Right.
Very wide.
Right.
There's potentially a lot of traffic in the neighborhood. I'm just, you know, the fundamental concern is, do we impose requirements that become difficult to regulate? And at what point do we, does the city have to say, "This is a problem"? But that can be the city's problem. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Would the petitioners like to come forward, please? And just to remind you, please state your names and sign in.
Okay. I'm Susan Kozlowski.
And I'm Michelle Kozlowski.
Before I get started, if I can approach, I have some emails and that, that I had received. These packets contain supporters that couldn't be here tonight, and as you look through them, you'll find the majority of them are people from our neighborhood that through, I don't know if it's considered a blog or, what is it, a website, whatever? They were commenting about the daycare, and they're support to us after we failed to pass the first time. And also, there's a few emails in there of, after hearing about us, families who were interested and wanted to meet with us for care for their children. Also, one correction to our paperwork, with our changes of design, we no longer have four parking spaces in the back, but we actually have five. So I don't know if that makes a difference or not. As we see it, we are providing a service to the families in our area, doing something we love. In this day and age, with so many stories of problems, it just seems to make sense to want responsible, high-rated daycares in the area. And I call us a high-rated daycare not to blow our own horn, but we have never had a complaint against us, not in the five and a half months we've been at this address, or the previous years that we have had a daycare as well. We've always passed all our surprise inspections with above-average rating. In fact, some of the things that we do at our daycare has ended up being used to train other people in the field as well. We are very serious about our profession. We're not babysit- We're not babysitters, we're childcare providers. We constantly attend continued education and training with a minimum of thirty hours each for both of us every year that we have done it. And very often, we end up more like fifty hours, and DCFS always reminds us, they can't give us credit for all of them, but we choose to do that. And those are taken in our own time. Our families that we do have are helping other area businesses by the sheer fact that very often, they will stop and shop here in Urbana because they've just picked up their child, their child is awake, and it's much easier to do shopping with a child that's awake versus driving home and their child has fallen asleep in the car. That shopping trip, if you've raised children, you know, is usually very awkward and very difficult. So Urbana has multiple pros by having us in the area. Jeff had mentioned that a different daycare was actually only a few houses away from us and ran for over twenty years, and she is actually mentioned in a couple of the emails in the packets I gave you. She recently retired, leaving a needed gap of care for the neighborhood. We have spoken to several families in the neighborhood about the desperate need because they like the fact that their child doesn't need transportation but walks from school. It really eases parents' minds to know they're not in vehicles, and we can provide that. We have several of these families on a waiting list wanting to use our daycare, but currently can't right now. We've also been approached by seven different families who are in the Foreign Language Department of U of I. These families, just to name a few, they speak Italian, Persian, Mandarin, and Portuguese at home. They want their children to learn their native language, but they need someone to help teach them English, possibly some English customs and that, and learn to socialize with other children. And we're willing to provide that to them. Many daycares don't want that because they view that as a possible headache, that the child is not understanding you, so you have to take time to break that barrier. We've done every step that is asked of us over the past five and a half months, yet personally, because we came forward when we found out we were supposed to come to zoning and apply and everything, just so that we were doing the right thing, because we always swore our daycare would be doing the right thing, not doing shortcuts and that. But it almost feels like we've been getting punished over the last five and a half months as well. As I said, that's a personal feeling. Then there, you know, it also bothers me that there's a fact that decisions are being made of other businesses either not needing or being willing to overlook special permits because Urbana doesn't want to lose the possibility of them coming into the town. I tend to view, and I know Michelle does as well, that having a good daycare for children, because children are the future of this town and neighboring towns as well, having that for them is just as important as any other business in this town, if not more so. Possibly, you know, one of these children that are sitting right here could be sitting where you're sitting in, you know, twenty years or so. There have been, as Jeff said, seven permits given to daycares since 1993. Only three of them were in-home daycares, and all of these were prior to the year 2000. Yet, I checked with Child Care Resources, there are over sixty licensed daycares in Urbana, and that does not count the licensed exempt daycares, and it does not count the other daycares which are probably close to the same amount that choose not to be in the referral system. These daycares, you know, ones that I've personally talked to, DCFS and Child Care Resource, actually knew nothing about zoning and that zoning can stipulate how many children are in daycares. They all viewed it as this has always been up to DCFS, and trust me, DCFS strictly monitors it, even though they are short-staffed as well. We get our, you know, so many surprise visits a year, and we're actually allowed one visit that we know they're coming to. But, you know, that's never failed. They always make sure they're inspecting us. In the five and a half months we've been at this location, we've had no complaints or disruptions due to traffic. In the six years prior to our move here, we also never had complaints from neighbors regarding the daycare, traffic, or how the grounds were kept. With us tonight, we have many people and families that we provide loving care to, and I know they all want to see us succeed. The decision doesn't only affect our lives, but it affects theirs as well. Our families are from many forms of professions, many have been with us from the start of our daycare, and to me, that says a lot. We've been in business for six years, and we have been blessed to be able to have families that we've not only cared for their first child, but we're now caring for their second. Hopefully, we'll be around to care for their third as well. Don't mean to scare any of you. They'll gladly tell you more when it's their turn to speak. But we don't want to let the parents, the children, or our community down. We love the community, we love the neighborhood we moved in, it offers so much for everyone there. It's a beautiful neighborhood, we're close to the library, which was something we loved. We're close to where my dad lives because I care for my dad. He lives in his own apartment right now, but I go there regularly, and it's very nice that I can even walk to his apartment now. To explain Michelle's children, Stephanie and Chris, they're, Chris, according to DCFS, doesn't count anywhere anymore. He's thirteen. They kind of view thirteen as the magic age. Stephanie is eleven, they're both in middle school, they are both very active. Stephanie alone is in two choirs, she's in student council, she's in
After-school.
After-school, some of their special programs that they offer there to learn different things. This is why they're not there very often. If they're in the home at all during the daycare, it's either a day the school is closed or maybe the last half an hour that the daycare is open, and then we don't have all the children anyways at that point because many of them have gone home already.
And most of the time, when they are there, for like days that there are no school, they're either up in their room away from the daycare area or they're in the front room, which is off limits to the daycare. So it's pretty much like they're not even there anyway, so.
Also, you know, it was mentioned that, you know, there'd be no signage or anything outside. We don't want that because it is our home as well. If you go, if you drive by the house, you'll see Halloween decorations in the window, and I'm a nut for decorations, so you know what, they'd be there even if we didn't have a daycare. The non-transfer, transferable permit is very important to us. It was raised as a main concern at the last session because then they said, if we did not buy the house, if we did move at some point, anyone who moved there could start a daycare, and it would be under this permit. And I was as upset as some of the council members were because I had not heard of that before. If I'm working for a permit for my family, you know, and our business, I want it for us. I don't want someday to have a permit that was under our name and someone else has dirtied their reputation, you know, because of something they've done later. So that's why in the application, you know, we were sure to put in, we wanted it stated that it was non-transferable. We hope to live a very long life in this house. It fit every part of our dream house for us. And, you know, but you also never know what life brings your way. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to try and answer them the best we can.
Any questions? I guess not, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I would ask at this time that if anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the, of this issue, please come forward. And just in case that everybody wishes to speak, please limit your comments, I'm going to limit you to no more than five minutes individually, I imagine that there'll be a lot of people for this. I just want to remind everyone that our Board of Appeals is not about whether we're for or against daycare centers. I think a lot of individual members of the board would say that they're sympathetic to daycare centers. Our purview as a board is specifically whether this location is an appropriate location for a daycare center and whether we should grant conditional use based on the criteria that we've been given. So please keep that in mind. So if you're, you don't need to give us a defense of daycare, we accept that. Thank you.
I'm Grace Shadle. I live at 1207 South Brace, and while that is not in the immediate neighborhood of the house in question, 211 West High, I ride my bicycle down Cedar Street three mornings a week on my way to exercise class at the Phillips Center. I have never seen any traffic problem on the street in that neighborhood at all since they've been there in the last several months. I've known the Kozlowski family for several years. They are really wonderful people, and I think that having a small daycare in the neighborhood that one could, families could walk to would be a real asset for the community and I think something that you should support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, my name is George Yurkachay. I live next door at 209 West High Street, and as I was walking here this evening, I thought to myself, who would have the most to lose? Well, obviously, the Kozlowskis, if the decision were to go against them. But I would too. That is my wife, myself, and my daughter. We own the house next door. We've been watching closely, we've been observing, and we have been thrilled with the Kozlowskis. They have done a very professional job in terms of being committed to not only keep up the house, but I think the larger issue here also, which is, of course, is owning one, is how they add value to the neighborhood. I drive, I teach at Parkland. I drive out of my house every day between 6:30 and 8:00 a.m. I've never seen any congestion there. So if you have any concerns about congestion, I'm the one to ask. I live right next door. And if you have, once again, if anybody has anything to lose, I would have something to lose. I urge you strongly to support the Kozlowskis and their initiative for a home daycare center. I think with the revised zoning item that would expire with the home daycare, I think it only makes their case stronger. I've heard all the arguments against, and I've paid very close attention to them, but I haven't heard one yet that persuades me not to support the Kozlowskis, and I urge you to do the same. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I live around the corner, so I'm in the neighborhood, and was opposed to this proposal last time, simply based on the zoning ordinance. I did not want it to just now become a property that was going to change the zoning for the neighborhood, but with the condition that once they vacate the property, it goes back to single-family without business, I have no problem with that at all. That makes me feel really, really good, so.
Thank you.
Currently, we live in Champaign, but we are looking to move to a new house, and we have our daughter in daycare with the Kozlowskis. And one of our criteria that we've been looking at is close to a daycare center, and have been seriously considering at least one house in the neighborhood and have looked at a couple others with the idea that we could then walk our daughter to daycare.
If, if this were not to pass, I'm not sure I would want to move to Urbana, to a place that would not want a home daycare within a residential neighborhood, and I would look to stay in Champaign.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Margaret Otto, and I live in Urbana, and I've known Sue and Michelle for six, seven years, and they have the highest ethical standard in my eyes of anybody I know. They're strong Christians, they're loving people, they love kids. I love kids, but I don't hold a candle to those two. And anybody should be glad to have them in their neighborhood as a neighbor, and I've been around their other daycare places, establishments, homes. They just do a great job. And so far as the zoning goes, I walk over in that direction, and I've never noticed any traffic problems over that way myself. So if it was traffic, I wouldn't see a problem at all. I think it would be missing out on a great deal, and I'm supposed, I think they would have to move because they need the income of having extra children in their house.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Daniel Brandt. My address is 502 East Michigan here in Urbana. My daughter, Eleonora, has been attending Sue and Michelle's daycare since January, so for about ten months now, and I'd just like to speak in their support and stress how conscientious they have been about the impact they might have on the neighborhood and proactive in telling us where to park on Cedar. And every morning, as I drop off my daughter, I sometimes see the other parents, and I've always seen and, and I've always seen, seen them to be respectful of the, of, of the neighborhood and, and quiet, not, not, not trying to be disruptive. So I urge you to, to support the zoning change. Thank you.
My name is April Schumard, and I am currently employed by Sue and Michelle at their daycare. I have my associate's degree in child development and working for my bachelor's in child psychology. I park my vehicle in the mornings, not before 9:00 a.m. on Cedar Street. And what I see in any kind of parking there is the parents are quickly in and out, and there's not any congestion except for with all the work that is being done around that area. But other than that, the parents are in and out quite quickly. So I hope you support them.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sarah Gerth, and my daughter is Elise Ivy. She is six months, and she attends the daycare with Sue and Michelle. I work at the Brickens Building, so it's really convenient for me to get to her if I need to in case of an emergency or if she has a doctor's appointment like tonight. So it's very, very convenient. Also, we always stay in the area for lunchtime, art mart, buy gifts, and cookies. So they're very loving people. She's been there for three months, and she's just learning so much. And I would appreciate it if you would consider changing your minds and also supporting them as well. Thank you for listening.
Hi. I'm Jeff Nugent, and my daughter goes to the Kozlowskis. And we've been with them, I don't know how long, my six-year-old started with them. And almost all these people here are parents. Unfortunately, I don't even know some of these parents because we don't have, we're not there at the same time. So basically, what I'm getting at is the time of the staggered that was in question. I only see one other parent there at the same time that I'm there. I drop my kid off probably between 10:00 to 8:00 and 8:00 o'clock in the morning, and then pick her up by 5:00. And never do I have any problem with congestion. There's maybe only one other car on Cedar at the time. And, and actually, it's a pickup truck that's there pretty much all the time anyway. So never do I have a problem with, with any congestion at all. So please have consideration and know that there's, there's no problems with congestion as far as I can tell.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Koontz. I work here in Urbana in police training. My five-year-old son has been with the Kozlowskis since he was six months old. He's now in kindergarten. While he was there with the Kozlowskis, he just, he learned so much. Writing his name, alphabet, counting, colors, shapes, you know, the, the normal stuff that we think that people are supposed to learn in kindergarten and preschool. Well, he learned all that while he was at their daycare. Currently, my younger son, Eli, is 16 months old, and he's been with the Kozlowskis since he was six months old as well. And they're, the things that they're instilling in my sons are, are priceless. I realize I'm, I'm defending a daycare right now to you guys, but the, the big issue that, that I've, I've sat back and I've listened to is, is the congestion in the parking, the detriment to the neighborhood. The truth of the matter is, is they've been a daycare in this location for the last five and a half months, and there's been no congestion. There's been no detriment to the neighborhood. So if, if the past does any inkling of what the future is going to be, I would, I would seriously take that into consideration, that there's been no complaints and no, no congestion. So I would strongly, strongly encourage you guys to support the Kozlowskis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Anita Trust. I just wanted to speak about the location. I am currently employed with DCFS. Our office is literally right around the corner. It's been a blessing to have a daycare so close where I'm able to stop in and drop in during my work hours. I've never had an issue with congestion, and I'm there. I go in the morning, in the evenings, and sometimes just during the day when I want to drop in and see how everything is going. So I think the location of the daycare is a really good thing for the community and for other people who work in the area. And it's good to know that my child is safe while I'm out working and looking in on other children. So I would like you all to consider leaving where it is.
Hi. I'm Marcus Trust, and I too work for the Department of Children and Family Services. I'm a child abuse and neglect investigator. And a lot of times when I'm out on investigations, people always ask me, where, where do your kids go? Who's safe to have around your kids? And it's Ms. Sue and Ms. Michelle. They often joke like, oh, well, you know, we had DCFS in your home all the time. Yes, we're there all the time. We're there every, we come every day. And as far as like the streets and, and the congestion, I'm in the streets. I'm in the streets quite often. And I, I service the Urbana area. I service Ford County and Champaign County. And as far as the congestion, the major, the majority of the construction is more congestion than the dropping off of, of the daycare facility. I would wish you guys would consider definitely leaving it there. It is close to my office, even though I'm rarely there. I'm mainly in the streets serving the community. So just, just to keep that in mind. Thank you.
I assume that everybody who wants to speak for this has spoken. Is there anybody who's here to speak against this conditional use permit? Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll close the public portion of this hearing. Are there any questions or comments that our committee wishes to direct to staff or anyone else?
I have a question about whether or not all of these attached conditions are really necessary. Again, seems to me to be a little micromanaging. If, if I understand this is a state-licensed facility, then the number of children is regulated by the state. Is Urbana have some superior? Just a question.
No, sir, we don't. But if, if the Board wanted to reduce the number of children allowed, then you could add that condition. But we're recommending you go with the state's, what they've allowed.
Yeah, I've always felt like it's better for us not to be into the micromanaging of that. Almost, I understand how that relates to traffic, but when you start trying to say how many children in some variance to a state regulation, that's micromanaging. So I would just, I guess, want to say that I think all, that the number of children, that should be just consistent with whatever state regulations allow.
What would you recommend that?
We either delete the language entirely because a daycare has to operate under state regulations or if we, if we want to state something about that, we say consistent with state regulations.
Are you making a motion?
If that's what's necessary, yes, I will. I, I'm not always up on all the Roberts rules, but yes.
I think you could make a motion and state which.
Well, I moved that, then I moved that we strike condition number one, and, and number two, and three and four while we're at it. Because again, they, I think as was stated by staff, the traffic gets to be a problem that come out and observe and have other ways of dealing with that without it being specifically stated as conditions. That, I always think it's bad to put things in that are not unenforceable, but just so, again, nanny-state-ish. Just let the problem, if any, present itself instead of trying to anticipate it.
So you would make that as a motion? Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, Charles?
So what does the state recommend again? Number? What does the state recommend?
It's the same. It's.
It's eight?
It's eight during the school day and 10 before and after school.
And so should we, should we vote? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so we'll drop those criteria. Now would we like a motion on the conditional use permit?
Oh, I'm, I move that we grant the conditional use in case ZBA 2014-C-04, subject to the following conditions. No more than, oh, sorry. Drop off and pickup shall occur in the designated area along Cedar Street and not in the shared driveway. The conditional use permit shall expire if applicants no longer reside in the home. The facility shall meet all applicable federal and Illinois Department of Children and Family Services regulations, including limits on number of children. And lastly, that the use must confirm, conform to all applicable building codes and obtain a certificate of occupancy from the building safety division.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. McLaughlin? Yes. Mr. Warrenbrand?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Mr. Armstrong?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Our second case is case number ZBA-2014-C-05, a request by Andrea and Martin Bone or Bond for a conditional use permit to operate in owner-occupied bed and breakfast at 302 West Florida Avenue in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. May we have the staff report?
Thank you. Andrea and Martin, Martin Bone are applying for a conditional use permit to operate in an owner, an owner-occupied bed and breakfast in their single-family home at 302 West Florida Avenue. The subject property is located in the R1 Single Family Residential District, and owner-occupied bed and breakfasts require a conditional use permit to operate within this district. Now Exhibit F are the site photos of the subject property. The home is three stories tall, including the basement. It has five bedrooms and three bathrooms. One bedroom is located in the basement. One's on the main floor, and three are on the second floor. One full restroom is found on the main floor, while two are found on the second floor. The home has a FAR of 0.36, and the subject lot has a OSR of 0.64. And the home meets all required yards, meaning all regulations set forth in the Urbana zoning ordinance. And here's just the second page of pictures of the site property. Now Exhibit A is the surrounding land use map. The subject property, as I said, is a single-family residence. The structures to the northeast and west are also single-family residences. Meanwhile, the lot to the immediate south is part of the Orchard Downs community, which is owned by the University of Illinois and home to mostly graduate students and their families. Exhibit B depicts the zoning for the subject property, which again is R1. Those lots to its northeast and west are also R1, while the lot that is owned by the University of Illinois is owned conservation, recreation, and educational. Yes, I got that right. CRE. Now Exhibit C is the first page of the land use map. You can see the subject property is shown in red there at the very end of the, very bottom of the map. The subject property, as well as its areas to its northeast and west, are to be defined by a residential urban pattern which emphasizes walkability and proximity to business centers. Meanwhile, Page 2 shows that the land just to the south of the subject property is to continue to be down, continue to be home to the Orchard Downs community and to be defined by a mixed residential urban pattern. Now, the proposal we are focusing on tonight is for a bed and breakfast that is owner-occupied and will shall have a maximum of two guests at any time. The home has been used as an owner-occupied bed and breakfast since August of 2013 via the online portal Airbnb.com. After meeting with the homeowners, the city staff determined that they would acquire a conditional use permit to continue operation. One guest will be accommodated in the basement bedroom, while another will be accommodated in the bedroom on the main floor. The basement bedroom already has the appropriate egress window required by applicable codes. Both guests will use the restroom located on the main floor. Now, as seen in Exhibit E, which is a rough sketch, we see that between the home's two-car garage and its 78-foot-long driveway, that four cars can be accommodated, meaning the regulations set forth for an owner-occupied bed and breakfast with two guests. However, the guest must be approved beforehand, and the owners have said that they would only allow one guest to have a car on-site at any one time. Guests will not be allowed to have friends over, and no food will be provided to the guests. Moreover, no external signs will be found on the property. Accommodations will only be advertised on Airbnb.com. The proposed use will provide the homeowners with supplemental income and allow for two of the four unused bedrooms in the home to be utilized. The owners will be required to obtain a certificate of occupancy as well as a hotel and motel license. They will be required to also meet all regulations related to those two items. The owners will rely on their home's proximity to the University of Illinois campus as well as to two MTD-operated bus stops at Carl in Florida and Race in Florida to attract guests. Looking at potential neighborhood impact, the proposed use is not expected to have a negative impact on the neighboring properties or the surrounding district. The residential character of the home will be maintained. The proposed use requires no physical modifications to the subject property, and only a slight uptick in traffic in and out of the driveway may occur. No neighbors have complained of the use since it began in August of 2013. One nearby resident did voice their concern about the proposed use over the phone with city staff, feeling that bed and breakfasts were inappropriate in this district. Other more intensely-used owner-occupied bed and breakfasts are found nearby the subject property, specifically at 714 West Michigan and 710 West Oregon. These uses have not created a significant nuisance for neighbors. Looking at the requirements for a conditional use permit. One, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at this location. The proposed use is located in a community with close proximity to the University of Illinois campus, which is a major draw for users of Airbnb.com. The strong pedestrian infrastructure in the neighborhood, as well as the nearby bus stops operated by MTD, provide accessibility for the guests of the proposed use. Two, the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that'll be, that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. The proposed use is not expected to cause a nuisance for the surrounding neighborhood. All parking requirements. All parking requirements are already provided, although the applicants will only allow one guest at a time to have a car. No physical changes are proposed for the lot or the home. There will be no external signs on the property. And three, the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except where such regulations and standards are modified by Section 7-3 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use will maintain the residential character of the home. Meanwhile, city staff will ensure compliance of all applicable building and zoning regulation requirements before a certificate of occupancy as well as a hotel motel license can be issued. Staff recommendation is to approve the request, approve the proposal as requested with two conditions, which are, one, only two individual guests will be allowed at any one time, and two, the conditional use should only be approved for the applicants in this case and will not be applicable to any future owners or tenants of 302 West Florida Avenue. The applicants will not be able to utilize this specific conditional use permit in any other property in Urbana that they may move into or purchase. The zoning board of appeals has three options in case 2014-C-05. You could grant the conditional use permit as requested, deny the permit as requested, or grant the conditional use permit along with any additional conditions and requirements as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the proposals of the zoning ordinance. If you add additional conditions, I please ask that you articulate them. And the applicant is here with us this evening. If you have any questions after, if you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, once again to the summary of findings in the staff recommendation, okay? We have, in both of them, we say only two individual guests will be allowed at one time, but that's all you have in your recommendation. You don't have that there should be only one guest on the proposed use at any time will be allowed with, to have an vehicle on-site. Should that be added to the staff recommendation? Or are we just considering that these findings are being incorporated into this?
In terms of the second vehicle, staff doesn't feel that that's something we would need to impose. If they want to have that policy, that's fine, but we think there's enough room for a second guest vehicle and we think that's okay.
And that would be the same thing then with the food? If they wanted to serve food, it'd be fine with the staff also?
Yes.
Okay. I guess no more questions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the petitioners like to come forward?
Yes, I would like to very much, thank you. My name is Andrea Bone and I appreciate the opportunity to have this hearing tonight and for having to apply. Let me see, I need to go to the next page, actually. Okay, and my husband apologizes for not being here tonight. He's in Ames, Iowa, which is in some ways, one of the reasons I really enjoy being an Airbnb host. My husband travels quite a bit and I find myself alone in that big house and it's fun to have interesting people over to have nice chats with. I also want to just stress, so we had one guest in August 2013 and we were just sort of checking out Airbnb and while that was a good experience, we didn't really pursue it very much then. And that was the only guest we had in 2013, but we've had quite a busy time since the beginning of 2014. We've got pretty good ratings on Airbnb and we ourselves were quite surprised by how many requests we got. And in fact, as things were picking up, as Airbnb has across the world, I was really wondering, you know, I mean, do I need to let the city know is that I'm violating some kind of code or requirements? And I went on the website and couldn't quite figure out, I felt like there wasn't anything speaking against us using our property in that way, but did call the city. And coincidentally, staff had been starting to work on these issues, just like in many cities now, the councils, it isn't always the zoning board, is really trying to navigate this new share economy, as they call it. And I think there was quite a bit of news recently about Airbnb in San Francisco, which is their hometown, so to speak. And it was only last week that the city of San Francisco decided to indeed permit the use of residential properties for temporary guests in that form, with the one stipulation that these would have to be residents of San Francisco. A big concern that many, many cities have with Airbnb is that very valuable living space is now being taken up by Airbnb guests. You have lots of places where people find it more lucrative to rent out individual rooms rather than make an apartment or a house available for families who really need the space. Now, Urbana, that doesn't seem to be the issue and I very well understand that the question here tonight is really, does it, does it, the use of a property like ours as a temporary home, bed and breakfast, in a sense, new kind of bed and breakfast, I guess, does it impact the nature of the neighborhood? And I think the strongest argument there really are that it's a big house, it has five bedrooms, there's only two adults living there. Our son moved out two and a half years ago. We just have one car and we have one motorbike. By having one or two guests staying with us, it doesn't really make that much of a difference. I mean, that's like the capacity of that building, it doesn't really increase the load, the people load to the neighborhood, so to speak. And the other factor is that nobody has ever complained to us about anything, never approached us and said, you know, how come you've got so many people there? I mean, these folks typically go to their business in the morning. It's often a conference at the university, it's, they take courses at the yoga institute or they study the Alexander Technique here and they come back in the evenings and go downtown maybe to have dinner. There isn't a lot of in and out like you would have as a hotel or even as a bed and breakfast. Also, well, we've been approached by couples and families, we really don't feel comfortable having that many people in the house. So again, it's more like having a friend or a relative come over and stay for a while more than anything else. And we're perfectly fine with the conditions that have been proposed if this request is granted.
How often do you have guests?
I would say we've now at a point where it's probably 70% of the time.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone wish to speak on this issue? Anyone else? Any other questions for staff? Okay, Charles?
How is our research on this coming? I mean, we're, you're recommending approval of this particular case.
So our approach with Airbnb is really, we see it as a marketing tool and we're taking it on a case-by-case basis. So we did interviews with Airbnb owners. Some of them have longer-term rentals that kind of act more like a border than, more than a bed and breakfast. So we feel those were okay as they were being registered as rentals, but some of them were more intensely used and the Boons were one. So we asked them to apply for the conditional use.
Are we going to see several more of these?
Actually, probably not. We're keeping an eye on them. As they pop up, we'll interview them and see what the intensity of their use is. But right now, the, this was the only one that really stood out as being occupied most of the time.
And just to add on to that, I do a weekly update on Airbnb and see what the listings are in Urbana. And ever since the school year has started, there hasn't been any increase in the listings. So it seems to be more of a seasonal thing if, in consideration. But I do keep that a weekly update.
Are we prepared for, to make a motion?
I move that we approve ZBA case 2014-C-05, request by the Bones for a conditional use permit to operate in owner-occupied bed and breakfast at 302 West Florida in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District with the additional staff recommendations.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? May we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Warrenbrand?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
And Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any old business?
Nope.
Or new business?
Nope.
Any staff report for us?
No. Don't forget audience participation.
Do we have audience participation?
Okay. Okay, for staff report, previous meeting, the board heard a request for a major variance at 807 South Cottage Grove to allow a 100% encroachment into the yard. That variance was approved by city council.
I think we are adjourned then.